I will call this meeting of Christiansburg Town Council, January 14th, 2020, to order. The first thing is we will, as always, we will take a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. That's all right for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilman Sam Bishop, if he would lead the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to suggest some, an adjustment to the agenda. I had the Planning Commission and Recreation Advisory Commission appointments. I would also like to add Mrs. Sacks as the representative to the New River Valley Regional Commission, and I would like to, I think it's all we've got.
It's a motion.
You got a motion?
It's a motion.
I got a motion, you got a second. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We have no public hearings scheduled for tonight. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is the approval of December 10th and January 2nd meetings, recognition of proclamation, January 9th, Law Enforcement Appreciation Policy, Appreciation Day, recognition of proclamation of January 26th through February 1st, 2020, a school choice week, award of contract for Boxley Materials Company in the amount of $995,089.55 for construction of the FYE 1920 Annual and Primary Extension paving project, and we need to set public hearings for Comcast franchise agreement for February 11th, MMI Atlantic franchise agreement for February 11th, and schedule a rezoning request by RWW 36 LLC applicant property owner for approximately 1.9 acre of property located at the intersection of Runox Street and the 460 bypass westbound off-ramp, tax map number 529A-48, to the B3 General Business District for February 25th, 2020. The property was acquired from the Virginia Department of Transportation and does not currently lie within any designated zoning district.
Make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six eight, thank you. We don't really have anything scheduled under, or we didn't have anything scheduled under introductions and presentations, but at this time, I would like our town clerk, Michelle Stipes, to join me at the podium. I have a recognition, a resolution recognizing Michelle Stipes for 20 years of professional service to the town of Christiansburg, whereas Michelle Stipes has served the town of Christiansburg, Virginia for over 20 years as town clerk, and whereas Michelle Stipes was appointed clerk of council on September 7th, 1999, and has served acting clerk, and had served acting clerk of council for three months prior to that, and whereas Michelle Stipes illustrates great knowledge and skill in the town clerk position in the form of production of accurate and detailed minutes, preparation of professional agendas, and correspondence and provisions of timely and relevant guidance for the town council, various boards and commissions and administration in regards to proceeds, to procedures, reporting, and record keeping, and whereas the town council deeply appreciates Michelle Stipes for the efforts of the town and for her going above and beyond in her service, and whereas on behalf of the town of Christiansburg, and which it is with great pride that we, that Michelle Stipes is recognized for this community service, community anniversary milestone. Now therefore, we have resolved this Christiansburg Town Council meeting in regular session January 14th, 2020, adopts this resolution in recognition and appreciation for the dedication and commitment of Michelle Stipes for her service to the town of Christiansburg. We will have this recorded for the time, within the date of today. Do you agree with us? So, can I get a motion in a second on that?
No, it's a motion.
Second.
On the seconds, all right. We need discussion, nothing to say, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Now, Madam Clerk, would you?
Yeah. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six eight, thank you, and again, congratulations. Citizens' comments, this is where we open the floor for comments from citizens, items that may be of interest to them. I ask that you come to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here to address council?
Good evening, Mayor Barbour, Councilman. Sherri Glevins, 240 Virginian Drive. I happily stand here tonight as your district being supervisor for Montgomery County, and just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly tell you how much and excited I am, and how forward I look to serving and working side by side with each of you, and just wanted to show my appreciation for all the service that the town has given and has worked with me as a citizen over the many years, and I look forward to serving the citizens in town of Christiansburg, and wanted to just extend that my door is always open, and I'm here to assist and serve in any way I can. I truly believe, I'm proud to represent Christiansburg, and I truly believe Christiansburg is the best place to live, work, and play, and I'm proud to represent the town of Christiansburg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would be remiss not to welcome Joanna Hicks, your first very full of the town council meeting. Do we have any committee reports?
We do, but ours is part of the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hubbard?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Stipes?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Hicks?
Thank you.
Under discussion and action by mayor and council, amendments to Chapter 28 Solid Waste and Recycling of the Christiansburg Town Code regarding the elimination of dumpster service and provision of recycling carts to commercial customers. Public hearing was held December the 10th, 2019. Randy, you here to address this?
Well, I'd like to go ahead and get it on the table, since this is a recommendation from the committee I sit on, so I make a motion that we approve the amendments to Chapter 28 Solid Waste and Recycling of the Christiansburg Town Code regarding the elimination of dumpster service and provision of recycling carts to commercial customers.
I'll second.
Motion in a second?
No, it's on the table.
Any, Randy, any discussions?
This discussion, we've had this discussion, I guess, previously. Basically, it would eliminate all of our dumpster service, which we were actually operating at a little bit of a loss at dumpster, for dumpster service, and it would, though, allow with the change, we would provide basically recycling cart in addition to, by option two, get a garbage cart, you would also get a recycling cart if you choose to keep town service in the change, and we would build a standard residential rate, handle the collection just like residential collection.
Okay.
How much of a loss are we taking?
We were losing about 20,000, it's about 20,000 a year. Sorry, that's the free service.
That's the revenue. About $7,000, $8,000 a year on the commercial.
Dumpster service.
Any questions?
I'm not so concerned about the cost saving, though I should maybe, that's important, but I think it's, I think from the committee recommendation is based on equity, and that everyone's treated the same, and I'm, that's, I'm perfectly comfortable with the committee recommendation on that basis.
Very good. Marcy, you wish to add any point to it, or?
Well, when it does come to the dumpsters, I do just want everybody to know that we did take this very seriously, and we reached out and realized that there's other businesses in the area that are offering that service, and for the most part, they can do it cheaper than we can, because that's all they do. So, the decision to discontinue this service was, one, economic for the town, but also that anyone can still slide into another company's services, and they should not have any changes. So, had that not been available, I think our conversations might have been a little bit different, but I don't see that the service would change for a business.
Thank you.
Hey, before we vote on that, I've just thought of something, if, it's a little late, but the committee may have discussed this, but if there are nonprofits or so forth, or people that have a dumpster service, and they, they want to, you know, get our service and have the residential service, could we provide support for them to dispose of the dumpster, or is that?
They're the town's dumpsters.
Oh, they're the town's dumpsters, okay.
We own those.
So, okay, so we would be, we would help with that anyway?
Yes.
If they don't want, okay, very good, very good, thank you, yeah.
Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six eight, thank you. Consideration of elimination of free solid waste collection to nonprofits.
So, I'll get this on the table too, since this is a recommendation from the committee, is I make a motion that we eliminate free solid waste collection to nonprofits.
I'll second.
Good motion and a second, any discussion?
This is hand in hand with the first, first one, basically.
Correct. It doesn't take a code amendment, doesn't number less codified.
Right.
It's just something we've been a town policy.
Some of my comments on the first one are really applicable to this, is everyone is treated the same.
Correct.
Thank you.
The cost of the free services, approximately 20,000 per year.
Okay, I see.
Okay. I'd like to reiterate what Melissa, or Marissa stated before, is this wasn't an easy decision that just happened this week, there's been talks of this going on for now, probably two and a half years or three years, so.
So, now you're saying that we are losing 20,000 per year?
Correct, because we're providing free service for 28 nonprofits, churches and nonprofits.
I know some of the churches are a little bit disappointed with the move that we're making here.
But something, if I could just piggyback on your comment, is that we really did take a hard look. We know that nonprofits are appreciative of getting free services, but it's very difficult for the town to make sure that we know who the nonprofits are and be fair across the board, and so therefore, when we were discussing this now for quite some time, we felt like it was better to be fair to everyone and not have the citizens that pay for the service subsidize the nonprofits.
Also, we can't, you know, the town doesn't actively advertise free pickup, so if a religious organization or nonprofit does not inquire about it, they're not going to get it, and we can't afford, as a community, to offer, to all of a sudden publish this and offer every nonprofit free service and every church free service, unfortunately. So, it is, as Mr. Stipes said, it's an equitable thing, it creates an even playing field across for all nonprofits and churches.
Do you think the churches realize it, that we are supporting 28 different agencies, and, you know, it's?
They do.
If they've reached out, they do. A lot of them just went ahead and moved over to.
I did receive several calls, several of them were actually kind of appreciative of the fact that we have provided the service for decades for free. I think, in general, they've barely been, barely understanding of it, the fact that it's not, I guess, a standard local government practice, I would say, it's something that has, I don't guess it's necessarily unique to Christiansburg, but not many other localities, do it.
It's sort of archaic, it's been around since the 60s, I believe.
At least, at least as best I could tell, Barry Helms told me it was here when he was an intern in the early 70s.
Okay.
So, at least, at least since the early 70s.
Well, and the residential rate per container, $17, right?
Yes.
So, that's not, I mean, I don't think that's burdensome.
Although, well.
Is it 22, okay, with the recycling, yeah, 22.
Maybe $5 for recycling would be mandatory to keep.
No, I understand, 17 plus to 5 for recycling, yeah.
Now, even if they wanted another container, to have two containers, that would be double money, right?
Yes.
Just like for you.
Okay. Very good, any other comments or discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Was that, so was that a name?
Aye.
All right, okay, sorry.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Since 5 to 1, thank you. The next item is the consideration of donation of Christiansburg Fire Department's safety trailer to the Newport Volunteer Fire Department. Had a letter from, it was in your packet, from Chief Hanks, and it's, they have, they have the burn house, I believe that's what it is, we, they've had it since 2006, paid $8,700 for it, and they have used it, and used it, and used it, and they gave it to, they let someone else use it, and they used it, and now, Billy says, we don't really have a need for it anymore with the new burn facility, and so they are going to, they're asking that we allow them to donate this to Newport, to show that we support them also.
Mayor, I don't recall, but did, we only say the last time they used that trailer, I think it was like four or five years ago.
Yeah, I think it was in there somewhere, it takes minimum four people each time it's used, just don't have the time to set the trailer up and use it, therefore, past four years, trailer's been sitting in the recreation center parking lot and not being used, so.
I have a comment. So, for the people.
Do we need to get a motion?
I'm just making a comment about the trailer. I'm just saying that I'm not against it, since we had gotten this trailer as a free item for us, it sounded like we got it as a, it was part of a package we had gotten in the past, so I don't believe we, the town people pay for the.
We did, well, the fire department, out of their funds, paid $8,700. The whole unit itself, when it was built, was about 60.
Oh, okay.
We had a grant.
Well, we got a grant for that, so.
So, our funding was 8,700.
Okay.
And it is time consuming, and has not been used for four years.
I make a motion that we donate the Christiansburg Fire Department's safety trailer to the Newport Volunteer Fire Department, and may they use it well.
Second. A motion, and Mr. Bishop, second, any other consideration or conversations?
This is Newport and Giles.
Yeah.
I'd just like to comment that I appreciate the chief being a good neighbor.
Yeah.
You know, he could have sold it, he could have let it sit.
Well, and I think they have borrowed, they have borrowed it and used it in the past, but they, you know, it's, like I said, it hadn't been used for four years, and Newport would like it, and they'll use it in their, in a school program to take the kids through, just like we did for years.
And hopefully, they'll share it too, all of Giles.
Sure. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
All right. That is six eight. Staff reports, town manager?
Just to give you a reminder that your disclosure filings are due February 3rd. Michelle, I think you leaked previously, if you can, just make sure you've completed that by the deadline. Also, I'll just mention that dialogue on race is this Saturday at 10 o'clock, coffee with a cop at 9 o'clock.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, 25th.
Next Saturday. And I'd send you dates for potential retreats, I mentioned February 18th, which is an off Tuesday, and February 22nd, which is a Saturday. Would those work well for you? Were there any, any conflicts?
Can you repeat the dates again, I'm so.
18th.
February 18th and 22nd.
Is the Tuesday, is that in the evening, or?
Yes, yes.
The Saturday could be an all day?
Yes.
As much time as needed.
I'm fine for the Saturday, I think we need to, that's something we've talked about, so.
I think the Tuesday night, that gives the administrator Kevin to put some stuff together for us for Saturday.
Yeah, just get plenty of time, I think.
I mean, that's a couple hours, maybe.
Yes.
I think he's done, he's done it before, and he did that, he did a prep work, and then he goes, okay.
Are we, any thoughts to maybe having it at the New River Valley Development Corporation in Fairlawn?
We could, of course, that's Kevin's building there, so.
I'm president of the corporation, so it's kind of mine, but anyway, it's ours.
You know, we can do it wherever you desire.
Well, it's a good facility, it's a good facility for it.
It is, you know, now across points in town, so we really would be treating.
Okay, well, either one's fine.
Any preference, meeting space?
No preference.
I have no preference.
See what's easier for Kevin, if it's easier for us to come to him.
He's coming.
That's fine, okay.
Training.
So, the 18th of February?
22nd.
Oh, the 22nd of February.
18th and, or 22nd.
Oh, okay.
Wait a minute, say the 18th and.
18th and 22nd.
Oh, we're doing it twice?
I was thinking maybe a two hour session on that Tuesday, and then maybe an all day session on the Saturday, possible.
Tuesday would be, Kevin would prep.
When is Valentine's again? It's like 14th. The 14th?
Kevin, and I'm speaking for him, but I believe what he does, he preps, like he meets with us, and then he, he gets workshop ready.
Yeah.
For Saturday, based on our needs.
So, we're going to do two days, Tuesday evening for a couple of hours.
You have something you want to discuss, you want to find out Tuesday, and then we discuss it Saturday.
Exposed to be determined location on Saturday, the 18th, all right, 18th and the 22nd, are they good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Proceed. That's all you got. Any other staff comments, reports? Hearing none, council reports, Ms. Hicks?
Well, I, I would like to make a comment. So, we have the public comments closer to the beginning of each meeting, every time we have town council meetings. I would like to propose, and I don't know, more than you'll have to go into motion, but to allow the public to also speak towards the end of the meeting, because I feel like a lot of the times, we discuss a lot of subjects from the time those public comments are discussed to the end of the meeting, and I don't think we give the public enough time to speak about the issues we are even mentioning about during the public comments until the end.
Okay. We have done it several ways, we have done it toward the end, and we got comments from people saying, well, I had to sit through the whole darn meeting in order to say what I wanted to say.
I would like to.
It's about as broad as it is, long.
I would like to give the public that chance to speak at the end also, not just take away the one from the beginning, but also for the end. I understand what you're saying, as far as.
So, you want it twice?
Yes.
Two sessions?
Yes.
I think that, from my experience here, most of the time, when you have public comments, they are speaking about something else that's on their agenda, rather than what's going on in the meeting, and so that's why I would think having it at the beginning is not that bad, because then they don't have to wait around forever, and everybody's sort of fresh, and, so, I mean, I can go either way, but I think maybe in the, in the long run, the public will appreciate it if it's at the beginning, since they're, they're talking about, you know, what's on their mind.
I'm not just asking for one, I'm asking for us to be able to give the public another second chance to be able to speak.
I would like to think about that a little bit, do a little bit of research, is that okay? I mean, I don't think it's something we need to jump on tonight, but I do know that, and I'll check and see with some of the other localities, not that we're going to do everything that other localities do, but the, we moved it from the end to the beginning, more out of the request of the citizens, because they wanted to be able to speak your piece.
And I agree with that, I agree with that, I definitely agree that we should have at the beginning, because there are some things that people want to get out of the way and leave, because they have all their things to go and do, as taking care of kids or whatever they have, but I do believe that it's important to have it at the second, you know, a second time, just because there's issues that we talk about during the meeting that it would be good for the people to have an input.
Well, I'd invite Mike, you to do some research, and Joanna, you do some research, and this would be something that would be a discussion as a retreat.
So, we say we give them, we would look at the option, they could either speak early in the meeting, or they could speak late in the meeting, but not at both?
Well, I feel like we should have, if it's about a subject, that same person is not allowed to speak for the second time about the same thing, but then, unless there is new information that is provided to the public.
Okay, let me look on that.
I think that's a retreat thing, that would be great to discuss.
That is a retreat thing. Very good, thank you. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Showalter?
Nothing.
Mr. Stipes?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hubbard? Ms. Sacks?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Showalter, if this is where we would want to discuss the recycle?
Um.
From our meeting, or?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. So, we just had a meeting on the recycle facilities that we have in town, and they have, for the most part, been extremely costly to our public works department, because they have been abused. We're finding a lot of trash in the recycle bins, so what that means for everybody is that, one, it takes more payroll for public works to pick up the trash, but, two, if the trash is put into the recycled container, it contaminates the whole container, and Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority has let us know that our sites are the most contaminated, because we don't have man sites, where the county does have man sites, and so we've talked about this in the committee, tried to determine what we can do, and once we looked at the dollar amounts, and it didn't seem fair to have the citizens pretty much subsidize what someone else is doing incorrectly, and it adds up a lot, and so we decided that we would like to do away with the recycle sites, because they've been there for a free service for the citizens, and we've had that now for about a year after we rolled out the recycle choices with the town at the extra $5. So, the Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority is not that much further away near the Brock Farm, and that can be dumped at, as long as they have open hours, and it can also be dumped at the county sites, and we determined that we just cannot control the contamination that is continuing to happen at these sites, and because of that, we are recommending that they be shut down on a tiered situation, so we start with Camaria first, and then.
Which is our, our most contaminated site.
Which is the most site. I'm not sure if anybody had seen what had went on on social media or other posts, but there's been mattresses at the recycle site, there has been Christmas boxes, there's been bed frames, and a mound of trash that would. boxes, there's been bed frames, and a mound of trash that would probably fill a 10-foot truck that was literally just dumped there. And so that puts the extra work on our public works folks unnecessarily. And if it was just a one-time occurrence, it may be a different situation, but it isn't. It's multiple sites, it's multiple contamination, and it's went on now for a while, and we determined that it's time to do something about it. We don't feel it's right to have the citizens who pay for the service have to really have their funds covered what someone else does incorrectly.
Well, basically, what happens is, it's a great initiative, okay, but we are set different from the county sites who have certain hours and it's manned, right? So our sites are open 24/7, and that's the problem. There's a lot of people I've spoke to after the holiday driving by those who are doing it right, who live in the county. You could tell they're doing it right, you know, they have everything bagged properly, they put it in there. But what we mean by contamination is that if all of us go to the Cambria site and we do it properly, it takes that one person throws a huge, or two huge bags of trash in there that bust open, and then we have to pay to dump it. It's then become just a regular trash bin at that point. So every meaningful thing we wanted as a town to come from these drop-off sites, and it's not just this one. It was Betty Drive, when we opened the Cambria site, it moved to Cambria, and Betty still probably has some issues too, but it's a ripple effect. So you just can't shut down one, because then these people who are doing the illegal dumping will move on to another. When we look at it, do we want to man these sites? Do we want to have cameras at these sites? They cost money. And we already have a curbside program that's available to all residents, which we are rolling out to some commercial, am I right on that?
Correct.
Commercial in this last vote. So there's really no point in providing a trash bin for the few who ruin it for everybody else. If they, you know, so it's an unfortunate thing, but it is a recommendation that we tear it down with Cambria disappearing first. We are gonna reach out to the schools to see if they'd be interested in accepting our bins for free, so they can continue on a recycling program on their end, but we will eventually remove. Our recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee is to remove those, these sites. Thank you for bringing it up.
You know, I've seen these sites, especially during Christmas, yeah, especially when they were at Cambria, it was a mess, unfortunately, but my concern would be punishing the majority for the action of a few people that's messing up. You know, I've seen people use the cardboard recyclings and stuff like this, so it's getting used. But granted, it only takes that one or two to punish everyone, and I kind of have a hard time with that part. But yeah, during Christmas, it was a bad sight, and I took some pictures, but it was cleaned up.
Yeah, Public Works does a great job.
It was cleaned up the next day.
But Sam, it's just not here. We've been, ever since Lawrence and I have been on this committee, we've gotten reports on the contamination. And it does increase at certain times of the year, but the whole point is that, you know, if we're going to provide a dumpster, then somebody put it on the table that we provided free dumpster for anybody up there and recycling sites. But that's not, you know, that's why we have a curbside program. And I'm not willing to put the money, to continue to put the money into a program that's being used as a dumpster for free for certain people, unfortunately. I wish, you know, that's the unfortunate thing, the several people, whether they be town residents who don't participate in curbside pickup, or county residents, or if they're out of county, they're using it as a trash site, they are ruining it for everybody else, unfortunately. But the great thing is, the county has sites that are open during the day, that these people who are taking the time, it's more convenient to go to our sites, I agree, but they can take it to the county sites. Why double our, we're not doubling efforts, there's already a recycling site available at the county drop-offs. That is manned, that does perform well, or a lot better than ours.
In Montgomery County, or I always say Montgomery County, Montgomery Regional Solid Waste, too, out by the drop pond.
Right, they can go out there.
And they actually accept a lot more recycling than Christiansburg does. So you can bring out your fluorescent bulbs, your chemicals, your computers. They have a wonderful facility if anybody has never made it out there. I'd recommend it. But if you're trying to dump at Home Depot, it's not that much more time and effort to go to the Solid Waste Authority and dump it correctly.
How many, how many sites do we have?
Five.
We have five sites?
I know at least three of the county sites are just outside the town limits, and I frequented two of those. There are one on Merrimack and one just off of 114. I know there's one out towards Palt, too.
How, Sheldon?
Talking about, has one?
We've been very proactive with recycling, and since we have a very logical and tidy program in place, and have the nearby opportunities, I don't see this, it doesn't create much of a hardship for people. And most of all, the committee's recommendation, I accept. I don't know if we're gonna vote on that tonight, but first, that's just something to bring up as a staff report for future action.
Is this gonna require a vote from council?
I think I would like council consensus on it.
Oh, sure.
In form of vote, I can put it on for a future discussion, or if you'd like to.
I'd like to do it now, so that our PR department can get busy on, in our public works. And it is a tier down, so folks, these aren't all going away tomorrow. One will go away, our most contaminated site, Cambria, probably immediately, and then the other ones will be down. But hopefully, the public school in Montgomery County will accept, or at least the high school will accept our gift of giving them our trailer, so that their environmental club could maybe jump on board and do something with it. So.
I think we also discussed that the message boards are gonna go up on Cambria Street pretty quick, letting them know that it's gonna close. Very good.
So I'd like to make that in form of a motion?
I'll second.
The motion is seconded to remove the five.
Recycling.
Recycling trash dumps on a tiered level. Okay, motion in a second, discussions?
It's also gonna save time for our public works people. They'll be able to use that time that they're spending cleaning up extra trash and other things in the town.
Particularly since they've been operating about 20 minutes short for the last year or two. Hopefully, that's gonna get, that's getting better. But yeah.
But, you know, pretty much everything that was brought out of the Solid Waste Committee, Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee, Stormwater Committee, you know, these are things that, you know, these are incredible, you know, these were good programs, but unfortunately, they fall on the rest of the citizens to pay for. This, I'm a recycler, I pushed curbside, I was so happy to see that pass, and I, you know, I love seeing our sites that we have out there, which are, you know, we don't, aren't manned, that people can bring in. The people I met after Christmas, you know, they were doing it right, and, you know, they did not live within the town, and they just loved being able to, it to be so convenient. But unfortunately, you know, if it's just gonna be used as a dumpster, we can continue to do it. And it's unfortunate, I just, I hate to get rid of that program, but we just have to do it.
The key is the monitoring. I really believe that, having to go out to the county sites, the monitoring is probably the game changer on that.
I agree.
Okay. So we have a vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Was it a no?
That's a no.
Okay, it'd be a negatory?
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five and one. Thank you very much. Mr. Stipes, Mr. Hubbard, did you have anything? Or was that part of your?
We don't have said anything.
Well, he got it all together, all right. All right, very good. The thing, one thing that I have is that Charlie White Scarver is going to, wants to do a new photo of the new town, town council members. He has three dates available, and all of them are prior to one of our meetings, which is next, well, the 28th of this month, the 11th or the 25th of February. Ms. Hicks, it's, you know, you'd have an individual headshot, so you'd need to be here about 6:00. Council would need to be here at 6:30, and the dress is men is jacket and a tie, and women blouser dress. And is the 28th good?
So just one headshot?
One headshot, then?
You'd make my wife a happy woman, getting that beard off my face.
Oh, do you want another? We can do another one for you, but it's at your cost.
I'll drive her crazy for another year.
Very, very good, very good. But the council, I will be, you?
Yeah, that's so far off. But I'll let her, that'll be some consolation for.
So is the 28th good night? I'll send email out to remind everybody that, as probably Melissa will too. Very good, thank you. Okay, you'll get with Charlie? Very good.
There is not another meeting going on on that day, right?
On our normal council meeting.
Okay.
And then we would keep that in mind. I don't know that we have any work sessions or things planned earlier than that for us, but it is, it is a council meeting night, so.
Well, yeah, I know that it's a council meeting, but I just didn't know if there was another meeting before.
There will probably be a street committee meeting, then we can work with the community members on what time they go across.
Okay. Okay, very good. Maybe even if you had to start a half hour early or something? All right. The other thing is, that I would like to remind everyone, is the PPEA meeting Thursday night at 6:00 here. They're gonna, we're gonna see the, and of course, Public is invited, we're gonna see the 30, 35% projection on it at this time, and answer any other questions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. So that is Thursday night at 6:00 here.
I thought we were having 80% plans in March, is that right?
In May.
In May.
These are 35% plans.
Didn't realize we were able to get monthly percentage progress reports, but I guess it is, the earlier we point out anything in the design, the easier, better?
It won't be close.
Okay.
Keep everybody square away.
Very good. Under other business, the Royal Organization for the Year 2020, what is the election of Vice Mayor?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation, and I would like to recommend Marissa Sacks to be the Vice Mayor for 2020. And I think you could just see tonight, her enthusiasm for the town council, and for things that are going on in the town of Christiansburg. And I think the two years that she's been on council, she has done a wonderful job, and done lots to stimulate everybody. And I also have another feeling here, is when you were on your trip in October, Mike, that she will probably do a little bit better job than the fellow that they had there last.
Very good. Thanks, Steve. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Well, we got a vote on it.
We've voted.
Madam Clerk?
Bottom support, yeah.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
No.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And that count was?
Five one.
Five one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Four one, and you abstained, didn't you?
No, sorry.
Okay. Narrows the margins. Next, is to set the regular meeting dates of council. They are currently the second and fourth Tuesdays at 7:00 PM.
Make a motion, we keep it the same.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The appointment of committees by, of council by Mayor Barber. We have the Water Sewer Solid Waste Stormwater Committee of Mr. Sacks and Mr. Showalter. Street Committee, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Stipes. Finance Committee, Mr. Showalter, Mr. Stipes. Emergency Services Committee, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Hubbard. Central Business District, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Sacks. Planning Commission, Mrs. Hicks. And Public Wealth and Council on Human Relations or ADHOP Committees, whatever that means.
Planning Commission would need to be a council appointment.
I'm gonna ask them to go ahead and vote on all this at this point. You want me to back it out?
That one, I think you should do separately.
Okay.
That's the only one we vote on, you, your plan.
Do I have to plan all the others?
We'll start with your appointments.
Okay. And the other is?
What about the Regional Commission?
Parks and Rec and Regional Commission are, the Parks and Rec is a mayoral appointment, Regional Commission is council appointment.
So we have to vote on the Regional?
Okay, very good. I also had asked Mrs. Hicks if she would serve as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. So do I hear a motion to appoint Mrs. Hicks to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? That is assuming you're willing to serve, Ms. Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five oh and an extension, okay. The next, I would like, I would entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Sacks to the New River Valley Regional Commission Board.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions, suggestions?
You'll enjoy that. You learn a lot.
I'm looking forward to it, every minute.
So I have a motion, yes?
I've done it for two years.
I did a motion, and we had a second, right?
I did.
All right. Ms. Stipes?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five oh and one. Thank you very much. Get all my agendas squared away here. No, that's my point.
Oh, sorry, okay, yes. Okay. I move that town council enter into closed meeting as stipulated in the agenda, under Code Section 2.2-3711A1, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting is for discussion of personnel, specifically the appointment of officers for the year 2020. Clerk, could you kindly pull?
Give a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
It's close enough, isn't it?
Yeah, we're good.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
No.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is, the count was five?
One.
Five one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna take about a three, four-minute break. We're now in open session. Ms. Vice Mayor?
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed on the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters are as identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six A. Our actions of the mayor, the actions on the matter, appointment of officers, town manager, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint the Randy Winfield as our town manager this year with a six-month formal review.
Second. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six, oh, thank you. Finance Director Treasurer?
Make a motion that we reappoint Mrs. Val Tweedy as Finance Director and Treasurer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six, oh. Police Chief?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mark Sisson as the Police Chief of the town